On this week's episode of the Best of Johnston County Podcast, my guest is Johnston County Commissioner Mike Rose. He was appointed in December of 2024 to fill a term of somebody who was no longer going to be on the county commissioners. We talk about his growing up in Princeton, going to Princeton High School, NC State in East Carolina, his small T-shirt business there in the town of Princeton, all the things that he loves about Princeton and some of the things he did on the Princeton Town Board for 11 years and why he decided to put in and get appointed Johnston County Commissioner. I think you will find it fascinating and interesting about what his vision is for the county. So listen in.
Welcome to another episode of Best of Johnston County brought to you by Breeden Law Office. Our host Jonathan Breeden, an experienced family lawyer with a deep connection to the community, is ready to take you on a journey through the area that he has called home for over 20 years. Whether it's a deep dive into the love locals have for the county or unraveling the complexities of family law, Best of Johnston County presents an authentic slice of this unique community.
Hello and welcome to another edition of the Best of Johnston County Podcast. I'm your host Jonathan Breeden and on today's episode, we have a brand new Johnston County Commissioner, just appointed back in December, Mike Rose, and he's here to talk to us a little bit about why he wanted to become a county commissioner, his time on the Princeton Town Board and his business, the screen printing for T-shirts and stuff like that. I think you're going to find this information fascinating. I've enjoyed talking to him before we started recording this. And y'all need to get to know him because he now represents all of y'all on the Board of Commissioners and he wants to hear from y'all as well, so he can do a better job. But before we get to that, I want to like, ask you to like, follow and subscribe to this podcast wherever you're seeing it, whether it be on Apple iTunes, Spotify, YouTube, Tik Tok, LinkedIn or Instagram or anywhere else you can find the Best of Johnston County Podcast. The Best of Johnston County Podcast comes out every single Monday. And if you would also do us a favor, leave us a five star review down below. It will help us reach more people in Johnston County so that they will learn more about why I and you and Mike Rose loves Johnston County. Welcome, Mike.
Thanks.
All right, no problem. So what's your name? What you do?
Yeah, my name's Mike Rose. I'm from Princeton, newest county commissioner, as you said, and also on QuickShirts in Princeton. This is our 30th year. So I've been from Johnston County pretty much all my life. Grew up here, went to Princeton High School as well, graduated, went to school there K through 12 and had my business located there, lived there and just loved Johnston County and loved the opportunity to serve.
I got you. Did you go anywhere to school after you went to Princeton schools?
Yep, yep. So I did. I actually graduated from East Carolina University and that was a pretty fun time. Did go to NC State before that and transferred during my college when I changed majors. But then I was a teacher and taught at Smithfield-Salma and Princeton. And also did a little short stint over at the, what we call the Safe Schools, the Alternative Learning Center. And so, yeah, I had altogether about a nine-year teaching career and started my screen printing business on the side to make a little extra money because everybody knows teachers don't make all that much money. And also when I was teaching, I also coached and coached my kids as they came up through Little League and all that kind of fun stuff. So, yeah, just, you know, trying to have a successful business here now for, like I said, 30 years. And it's been a, worn a lot of hats over the years and this county commissioner hat is the latest one.
Oh, my goodness. That's, yeah, that, that is something else. I think at East Carolina, being the NC State guy, I went up to that bowl game and it's raining and the East Carolina guy ran 80 yards to beat us. That was painful, but anyway, that's.
So always been NC State fan as well. So I didn't want to go to that game on purpose because I would be conflicted. But in 1991, when NC State played ECU in the Peach Bowl, that was my senior year in college and we went. And that was the game where ECU came back from 17 down in the fourth quarter.
They did.
To beat NC State. And, uh, and of course I was all purple and gold, uh, but it was.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, yeah. No, it's great. It's great. There's no doubt about that. So, all right, well, let's look and talk a little bit about your print business, what y'all do, what y'all do for businesses or community groups or whatever. So I mean, I don't know, you print shirts?
Yeah.
Uh, hats? I mean, what all kinds of stuff do you print?
Okay. So, yeah, our business is called QuickShirts and our domain is quickshirts.com, easy to remember. And, yeah, we print T-shirts for all kinds of events, a lot of businesses. We do embroidery, we do screen printing. A couple of new technologies that are out there called DTG and DTF where you can actually make digital prints and you can do one offs. So that's been a big holdback of screen printing. It's a lot of setup involved. So you don't want to do small orders, but with this, we have the ability to do a full color on as little as one shirt. And so we're actually in the process of revamping our website right now to try to take advantage of that. And, yeah, so we're hoping for a big year, but like I said, we've been doing it for 30 years and it started in my garage, actually in my attic space. I, uh, I was teaching and I needed some extra money and I was scrolling through Entrepreneur Magazine and I was looking at all these franchises that you had to have half a million dollars, you know, to start. And of course had to keep rolling, keep scrolling. And then, uh, at the back, there was a little, little black and white ad about print T-shirts. So I sent off to this company in Florida and they sent me a brochure and then, uh, I said, yeah, I want to do that. And I put $1,700 on a credit card and got some little rudimentary equipment and a book and a VHS tape and figured out how to print T-shirts and, uh, started taking orders and here we are 30 years later. So.
Oh, man, that's great. That's great. So y'all printing anything other than T-shirts?
So we do, uh, you know, pretty much any kind of apparel that you can wear. So, yeah, anything you can wear. And we also do banners and vehicle graphics and promotional items, cups, pens, and you know, mugs, all that kind of stuff.
Oh, cool. Cool. Well, that's great. That's great. That's great. So he says quickshirts.com?
That's right.
So anyway, so, yeah, so people, if you need any of that kind of stuff, reach out to him for that. So you were on the Princeton Town Board for 11 years.
Correct.
When did you first run for the Princeton Town Board and why did you run?
Okay. So it was a similar situation. There was a guy who was moving out of town, out of the town limit. So he could no longer serve and I heard about it and I got a few phone calls, you know, urging me to put in for it. And so it was, uh, that first, first couple of years was an appointment. And then I ran and successfully was elected twice after that and was into this last term, was about a year into it, when once again a, a spot vacated and I got a lot of phone calls immediately saying, this is, we need you to represent, you know, the eastern side of the county, make sure that, you know, we've got representation. And, you know, with the 11 years of experience and already having been, served on some committees with a lot of the other commissioners and having a pretty good understanding of what was going on, I felt like that's why I was chosen for the appointment. Because it has been a change for me, but I would say it's just the same things we were doing, just on a bigger scale.
A much bigger scale, right? From the town to the county. But I can understand that, but, but there is something about being an elected official and, you know, all the rules and open meeting rules and zoning decisions you have to make and, you know, engineering for new buildings and all of that. So, I mean, you're not, it's the same thing when we, Butch Lauder was on the Clayton County Council for a long time before he got to the county commissioners. He sort of said the same thing, a lot of the same stuff, just on a bigger scale. And he felt like that shortened his learning curve when he became a county commissioner, I believe in 2018. So I'm hoping that'll shorten your learning curve as well.
Yeah, I hope so too. And we actually just attended, uh, the School of Government, uh, had a, a two-day class down in New Bern and we just attended that. And there was a lot of good information that we got there, but it was a lot of the things that we had been doing on the municipal level. But, and then a few of those things I was thinking, maybe we were probably not doing exactly right on the town level. So, but nothing major. But, yeah, it was a great class and we were able to attend it and, and, you know, everything from ethics to, you know, just basically how a meeting should go and what we should be responsible for.
Yeah. And somebody told me that they went to that class and they spent a day and a half telling you things you can't do and a half a day telling you things you can do.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, that was part of the, that was kind of part of the rules is that, you know, if the law says, you know, uh, it's allowed. Well, basically the way it works is the law has to say it's not allowed. And if, if it doesn't say it's not allowed, then it's allowed. And so, yeah, so there was a lot of that that came up.
Well, that's interesting. So what are some of the things that you are most proud of that you did on the Princeton Town Board?
So there were several things, but, uh, the, a couple of things that come to mind right now are, are actually pretty recent developments. So, uh, a few years ago, when we had these massive rains and I'm trying to remember what year it was. It was maybe, uh, was that 2018, 2019? It was just, it just seemed like it just rained every day in the, in the summer. And we were getting, you know, eight inches this day and 10 inches that way. Anyway, we had a situation where our sewer plant had a lot of iron eye issues where storm water was entering the sewer plant and it caused our numbers to spike. And DEQ put us on a sewer moratorium. No more additions, no more housing permits, no nothing. And we spent a lot of money trying to fix those problems. So we had gotten our numbers down so that we were still, we were only about 60 to six, about 60% capacity during those overflow times, we were at 90 to 100% capacity. And that's, and DEQ has these rules in place because if they see you hitting at 90%, they know that your sewer plant is maxed and you need to upgrade your sewer plant. Well, that wasn't our case. We were, we just had some issues that got worked out. So we basically had been told no a few times that our, our moratorium could not be lifted. And basically had an idea that I floated toward the new mayor and, and the town administrator. And they did, the town administrator put together some, some charts with our town engineer and everything. And we were able to get some help from Larry Strickland and Benton Sari and we got that moratorium lifted, which was a huge deal because we were at a standstill. We had developers, we had people that wanted to build in town and we couldn't issue permits. So we got that done and that was, you know, that was one of the biggest things that.
Right. Well, he's talking about DEQ, which is the Department of Environmental Quality, I guess, right? And that's the state regulators who oversee that kind of stuff. Y'all also had some flooding in town and you had to rework some storm water to fix that. And tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah. So we did have a lot of storm water issues and, uh, you know, I along with the rest of the town board and the former mayor, we were able to get some funding from the state and also from USDA to go in and rework a lot of our storm drains and send water. We have a major, we call it, it's called the Beaver Dam Creek. It runs right through the middle of town. And that's where all the, the water basically goes out of town. And, and so we, we had to do a lot of cleanup of that because during those floods, like you were talking about, everything that was loose from tires to appliances, so everything had floated and then gone downstream and dammed up down there. And so we had to spend a lot of money just cleaning that, that creek out to get water to flow. So that's still ongoing and that's, that's one of those things like, you know, you don't ever fix it. It's just, you get it better and then you just keep, keep tweaking it.
Right. Well, for those people who are listening that may have not ever been to Princeton or haven't been to Princeton in the last five to seven years, what are some of the changes they would see there that, and why should they go visit Princeton now?
Okay. Yeah. So Princeton, there's been a lot of residential growth in the outskirts of Princeton, which is also driving a lot of new business growth in town. We did a little, I actually went around myself and did a little informal photo essay of all the empty businesses in Princeton, not that long ago, about seven or eight years ago. And it was, it was probably only about half capacity. And since then, every building is filled. There's nothing that's for rent. There is, we've got two new restaurants. We've got some gift shops that downtown. There's a wonderful coffee shop. And there's a lot of people that come into town now for those things. And, you know, in my business, actually, I'll say, you know, it's the kind of business, we don't really just rely on just Princeton. We have probably a, uh, you know, 30 mile radius of people who come to us. And so they come here and then to my shop and then they get a coffee or they go across the street and get a hamburger, you know? So it all kind of, you know, works together like that. And then the same thing, they may go next door and get a coffee shop, coffee. And then, hey, there's a T-shirt place over there, you know?
Well, what are the two new restaurants?
So the two new restaurants are Ali and Eli's, which is your typical kind of hamburger, hot dog grill.
Okay.
They serve, of course, Carolina Packers, red hot dogs only. And, uh, they did have, uh, one of our, our northern friends that's moved down. He, he insisted for the brown hot dogs.
Okay.
The brown hogs, uh, brown hot dogs lasted a very short time.
Okay.
They didn't, they didn't make it. So anyway, that's one restaurant. And then the other one is Bread and Bottle. And it's a kind of a, a, a neat restaurant that serves more like paninis, big salads, food you wouldn't really expect to get in Princeton and it's, it's really nice. And they have a full bar and they do, they have a cooler full of sodas and beers and everything. And they probably like a hundred different sodas and then a hundred different beers and everything to choose from.
Oh, man. In Princeton?
In Princeton.
Hey, that's awesome. That's awesome. Well, that's great.
And they have live music and everything. They have a little stage.
Oh, man. Well, that's really nice. I didn't know that. I'd say I gotta go to Princeton. There's no doubt about that. So, well, let's transition a little bit and talk about why you decided to put in for this appointment and get appointed county commissioner in December of 2024.
Okay. Yeah. Like I said, I was just doing my thing, you know, town commissioner, QuickShirts, you know, that kind of thing. And then was not actually following the trial that was going on. And I just got a phone call. I got a phone call, then another phone call, then another phone call. And they were telling me what was going on and they were like, we need you, we need you. And, and so I thought about it for the weekend. That was, I think it was a Friday and I knew that applications will be opening up. And so I decided, yeah, I think that this would be a good opportunity because I do feel like, and, and, you know, maybe this is because we're all from, you know, the small, smaller towns, all smaller towns probably have a kind of a little chip on their shoulder. Like we always get left out, you know?
Right. I agree.
And, and so I felt like having a little bit of a knowledge of what's going on might give me a little bit of a, an advantage in that we didn't need representation down from our end. My district is actually a pretty large district. It goes from Princeton all the way to Southern End of the County down to around Benson area, including Four Oaks and Bentonville area. But the way that, the way that the rules worked, it went by the way the district was written during the last election, which didn't include all the way to Benson. And so it was a little bit smaller and the two main criteria where you had to be at the same party and be in the same physical district as the last person was elected.
Right.
And so I meant that and I thought, yeah, it's time, it's time. And I want to keep representing Princeton. I want to keep representing Johnston County and my entire district. So I thought, you know, this is the time I should try.
Right. And for those of y'all listening, there was an election in 2022. The person that was elected ultimately was convicted of a felony last year and was sent to prison, which created an opening that you are now filling and you're going to serve the rest of this term until December of 2026. You're going to be up for election if you choose to for a full term of this seat in a primary that should take place in March of 2026. So you get a, a year to introduce yourself to the rest of the voters of the county and start to try to figure out what's going on. And, um, you know, and appreciate you coming all the way out here to 4042 to, to record this. Of course, me being the de facto mayor of Cleveland, I have a chip on my shoulder and think Cleveland doesn't get what it deserves from the county commissioners. And sometimes I don't understand the zoning decisions they make. And I think that we're a little bit like Charlotte and we just pay into Smithfield and Smithfield gives us peanuts back. But that's just how people in Cleveland are. Everybody, I'm sure people in Princeton think the same thing. And, you know, and unfortunately now I'm going to probably harass you about what I think Cleveland needs. You know, for the, for whatever time you're on the county commissioners, but that is normal with any government type thing, whether it's certain parts of town, if you're on the town board or certain parts of, it's a very big county. I mean, it's a huge county. It's extremely diverse, which you understand. You've lived here, your whole life. So it's, it is kind of fascinating. So, I mean, you get on the board and like three weeks later, the reevaluation notices come out.
Yep.
Tell me what that was like and try to explain to the people listening how this process is going to go.
Okay. Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah. So first off, it didn't go well, but it's okay. I understand that. My, my revows were a little bit higher than I thought they should be. I mean, I'll be honest, you know, there was, as Jocelyn, uh, is head of the tax office, it said, it's a mass evaluation, a mass appraisal. There was 120,000 properties to appraise in this county and that was up from 100,000 last revow. So that, we haven't added any land, but it's just been chopped up that many more times. So with 120,000 appraisals, there's probably going to be some mistakes made. I mean, it's, they will admit to it. So everybody has the opportunity to appeal and they can go to the, um, johnstonnc.gov or to jcto.org and start that appeal process. And I would say anybody who feels like their property is unfairly praised, they, that's what they should do. I'm all, I'm all for that. But, yeah, just saying that. So just understand though, because the property value went up, it does not necessarily mean that there's a tax increase. The tax rate has not been set. So we learned about the property evaluations about a day or two before everybody else did. We were not involved in that at all and we're not passing the buck, but it's just the way it goes. The tax office does their job. They give us the numbers and then we look at the needs of the county and what do we need to meet those needs of the county? What tax rate times that property value gives us that number?
Well, and the evaluation, I think it was up, was it 60%?
About 70%.
70%, right? In six years, between 2019 and 2025. And next time they're going to do this, they're going to do it in 2029 and now it's going to be every four years. So we won't have quite the sticker shock that we have now. And we had all that. I mean, everybody's house on the western end of the county went up $150,000 in about 18 months during COVID. And I tell people that I would rather have a house that went up $150,000 in 18 months and pay the county a few extra dollars than not have a house that's going up. Because in some places, the property values are going backwards in North Carolina.
Yeah. And let me touch on that because it does show that we're in a strong vibrant economy in Johnston County, but because our houses are going up, our properties are going up. We were just in this, Claesford School of Government was down in New Bern. And while we were there, I, I had really, didn't really think about it because I'm, you know, from Johnston County, I, it's a rural county. I grew up burning tobacco, you know, riding on the back of pickup trucks. And this is, was, I kind of still think about it like small, small Johnston County. But we were, Johnston County is, is a big county when you get comparing, there's a lot of the counties down east. And we were listening to their problems and, you know, they're talking about having shutdown schools because there's not enough kids. You know, how are they going to make a budget? Because they don't have any money coming in. They have negative growth. Those are not the problems we want to have in Johnston County. So I'm, everybody's got problems, but I'm thankful that these are our problems.
I agree. I mean, I grew up in Scotland County and they're closing schools because they have, they don't have kids and they were, they're looking at negative growth down there in a lot of ways. And so I understand how it can be the other way. And I will take Johnston County's problems any day of the week. And, you know, and, you know, so we'll transition to this. You know, you got appointed, so you didn't go out and get, you didn't go out and campaign. So we don't really know where you are. But there's a lot of people, this sort of drawbridge syndrome where I live here now, let's pull up the drawbridge. People can't come, where more people come to Johnston County? Roads are crowded, schools are crowded, but that's not the reality. People are going to come here.
That's right.
Have family law questions? Need guidance to navigate legal challenges? The compassionate team at Breeden Law Office is here to help. Visit us at www.bredenfirm.com for practical advice, resources, or to book a consultation. Remember, when life gets messy, you don't have to face it alone.
So what are your thoughts on how we're going to deal with the inevitable growth?
Okay. Well, you're right. Growth is inevitable. I mean, that, that is where we're at, that with RTP where it's at and 40 and 42 coming through and, and 95, that is inevitable. We're going to see growth. You know, and, and what we've got to do is just be smart about it and make sure that, you know, a big problem is runoff. If we've got, you know, so many rooftops, so much asphalt, and then we've got flooding issues downstream. Those are the things you have to look at, not to, uh, mention, you know, just having access to fresh water and sewer and those are big deals. And right now, you know, as we get all of our drinking water from the noose, you know, and it's coming, you know, basically downstream from Wake County. And, uh, there's a lot of issues with how are we going to handle that growth? And so that falls back on not just us, but our county staff. And I mean, they're, they're really the ones that are doing the hard work. I don't want anybody to think that the county commissioners are, are drawing up engineering plans and, you know, we don't want that. You know, we've got professionals that did that for us. But, yeah, I do think that the growth is, like I said, is inevitable and we just got to be smart about it and make sure that it's the kind of growth we want to see. And as we were talking about earlier, the fact is that cost of government is going to up every year. It's going to, our employees are going to want pay raises, which they deserve. Equipment's getting more expensive, vehicles getting more expensive, buildings are more expensive, everything's more expensive. So how do you handle that as your income needs or your revenue needs are going up? You either grow or you raise taxes. And growth, as you may well know, over the last six years, the county commissioners before I got there have lowered taxes four times. So a lot of people don't forget that, but their, their tax rate is, I think, 11 cents less now than it was in 2019 with no revow, just because of the growth. So because of growth, we were able to lower county taxes that many times. So, or I say the commissioners were. So having said all that, you know, my opinion is, as we said, growth is inevitable. And so we just got to be smart about it. We got to have proper infrastructure. We got to have proper runoff plans for all this storm water and, you know, have schools for kids. There's a lot of planning going on and I don't think we can stop the growth and I'm not here to try to stop the growth.
Okay. And so have you been assigned to, you know, you have to be on lots of committees. Which, have you been assigned your committees yet?
Well, I actually, I asked Commissioner Lauder about that just a couple of days ago because we have not been assigned by committees yet and those are coming out very soon. And so, uh, yeah, I don't have those yet, but I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I don't think people have any idea how much work being a county commissioner is. It is so much work. I mean, it's probably 30 hours a week minimum for the amount of work that they have to do. And they all have regular jobs. I mean, I guess Ted's maybe retired and Bill's retired now, but the rest of them work. I mean, you know, I mean, like Patrick's kind of retired, but I mean, you know, I know April Stevens works very hard. You work very hard. Michelle's got hurt. Michelle Pace Davis has a farm. I don't know how much work that is and she has a small child. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot. Butch Lauder's an engineer. Like I don't know how y'all find the time to do it. It's, it's a ton of work. But, so what is, before we get into the last couple of questions here, what is sort of your vision now? I mean, you've only been on there a couple of months. By the time this comes out, it'll probably be three or four months. But, I mean, what do you, what do you want the citizens to know about your vision and what you're going to try to do for the citizens of this county?
Okay. Before I answer that, I did want to say kind of what you were talking about is that in my short time on the board, I have been really impressed with everyone's commitment to Johnston County. I've not seen anything and I do not believe that any of the commissioners have any self-interest in it. Where the, they, we all kind of laugh about how much time we, we do have to put into it. It is a lot. And I don't think, and they told me, like, when you apply for this, get ready, get ready. And I believed them and, and, you know, it's, luckily they were able to give me warnings that it was going to be kind of like it is, but it is, it hasn't even exceeded that. But, but having said all that, yeah, what I want to do for Johnston County is I want, I want to make sure that, that I am a voice for our constituents, our residents, as I am and you are one too. And, you know, it's important to me that we balance the needs of the county with what we can expect to be a fair amount of requests from our citizens when it comes to this new revow and this new tax rate. It would be real easy to just say, well, we're just dropped the tax rate, you know, 10 cents or whatever. And that generates an extra, I'm just throwing out a number, maybe $50 million or something for the county to spend. But, you know, that's not, what I want to do is look at how much is it affecting the average homeowner? What is their out of pocket? Doesn't matter what, what the rate is. What is their out of pocket cost at the end of the day? You know, when they've got to write that tax, that check to the tax office at the end of the year, is this year going to be substantially more than last year? And, and I hope that it will not be. I would just be one voice on there. But the other thing is that I hope to provide to the county is just having been here for all of my life. Just have a, I'm not professing to be an expert at any one thing. I think I'm, I'm kind of good at knowing what I don't know and trying to ask the right questions when that comes up. And so from my standpoint, what I'll try to do is just provide a, a level-headed opinion. When I vote, it'll be what I think is the best for the county. And, you know, I don't have any, any agenda, any specific like projects that I'm necessarily working on. I just want to be able to represent us as a whole and, and of course my district. I want to get around and meet as many people as I can from the whole county, but especially from my district is where I represent and see what their needs are and what they're asking for. And just like we had a meeting last night with the fire department. And to hear, you know, they had some complaints, some legitimate complaints and some that, you know, it's their job to try to get all that they can. It's just like the school board is going to present a giant request, I'm sure. It's their job to try to get all that they can. And it's our job to try to keep everything in check and not, not, you know, ask too much from our citizens for those things.
Well, that's great. That's great. Well, the last question I'll ask you this time, and we're definitely going to have you back as you get into it for sure, is what do you love most about Johnston County?
Phew. That was one of the questions on the questionnaire. Like what do I want to see changed about Johnston County?
Or not even changed, just what do you love?
No, but.
That, that was a question I do put on the.
That was kind of the thing. It was on the questionnaire and I was like, you know, I don't, I mean, change? I don't know. I, I mean, it's home. I love it. And, uh, so what do I love about Johnston County? I love that it's, I live in a little town, you know, Princeton, thousand people. All right. You would think if I, if I met somebody from New York and they said, you live in a town of a thousand people, it must be Hicksville or something, you know? But, yeah, it's not. It's rural, it's small. I can get anything I need almost within the town. And if not, you know, we're at 40 minutes from a major airport, you know, it's, it's, we're still rural. We're still small enough. There's still a community. It still has an identity as a farming county, I think. Still glad to see the jobs coming in from, you know, the western part of the county through the pharmaceutical industry, of course. But all of these things make Johnston County an exciting place to live. When I started looking at some facts about Johnston County, of course, we are by percentage, the fastest growing county in the state, 14%, I believe. We're the ninth largest county in the state. But yet, when you look at our county, we don't have any cities. You know, when you look at the top counties, you got Mecklenburg, they got Charlotte, you got Raleigh and Wake, you got Forsyth and what's it say on? All of the ones bigger than us have a recognizable city. We're just a conglomeration of the small towns and I really like that. You know, whether it's Micro or Kenley or Clayton, you know, we're, Clayton, of course, our biggest town, but still, it still has a small town vibe. And I like that.
Well, and the Cleveland township is bigger than all of those, even though we're not a town. So anyway, we would like to thank Mike Rose, Johnston County Commissioner for coming and being on with our podcast here today. As we mentioned earlier, please like, follow, subscribe to this podcast wherever you're seeing it. Uh, we'll give you comments down below. We'll make sure we get those to him. If you've got any questions for him or whatever, reach out to him and his business there in Princeton as well. We'd love to make some T-shirts for you. Until next time, I'm your host, Jonathan Breeden.
That's the end of today's episode of Best of Johnston County Podcast.